Okay, we'll get started in this meeting of the city council, May 20th. And I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Seven oh.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. The clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5P exhibit only resolution approving payment of final pay application for tap out construction for the purchase of 321 Division Street. We're adding 5DD resolution authorizing use of City of Biloxi equipment by Biloxi National Cemetery Memorial Day Committee.
I move the agenda as amended. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to move the agenda as amended by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Guines. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous, seven oh. We'll go ahead and move on to the presentation agenda and we'll start with the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to everybody on the left side of the room. So y'all doing a good job. And everyone on the right side, they all work for us. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, all right.
Great. The department reports, move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we had one about a wooden boat show. It turned out great. It's really nice to see all the older boats and stuff like that. And most of them are wooden boats, like the wooden boat show, but you don't see anymore. Everything's fiberglass or whatever. But it turned out to be a nice weekend and turned out the event was great. And next thing I got, I need to find out from you, Fofo, the splash pad on the point. I know we gotta replace the bottom of it and stuff like that. Do we have the funding for that because this needs to be done immediately? This is a city.
We've met with, I believe, three weeks ago, four weeks ago with the contractor out there.
I mean, it's one of the most used splash pads we have in the city. It's gotta be ready for the summer.
I just got, excuse me, I just got a second quote today, mayor, and it's, yes, I'll have to give you the quotes and the pricing. It's a little over a hundred thousand. You gotta replace the playground and the surface and the splash pad surface. Yes, sir.
So we'll have the money to fund it when it starts. And about the fans, we have a problem with the fans?
Yeah.
We, yes, we went ahead and removed them so we wouldn't have to tell everybody, but I've got quotes on those two to replace.
All right, 'cause I know they had the Neptune thing down there this week and I think some of the fans wasn't working.
Yeah.
That was a big crowd there, that's a good thing.
There were no fans there.
Yeah, there were no fans, but the environment and the rust has a big thing to do with that electrical works there.
Somebody I need to meet with either you, Fofo, or Peter about the call legging. They trying to put that tournament back together. That was a local, big, local tournament. And they're gonna need some help, so I don't know, they're really not a nonprofit, they applied for that, but they hadn't received it yet. So I need to find what we could do to help them get this back on the table. 'Cause that was, that was a big local tournament. And what happened after, what is, COVID and all that, it kinda killed all of that. But they wanna get it started, so I need to meet with you. Peter, we need to sit down and make sure we get something together where we can help them.
I'll get your contact.
Let's see. That's it. Mr. Guines?
All righty, all righty. And I too attended Neptune and it was a great event, great family event, had a ball, had a great time. Also wanted to mention about Primetime, Primetime anniversary. Today, we're recognizing the 50th anniversary of Primetime Agency with a ribbon cutting at four o'clock. And 50 years ago, Ted Reedman formed the company in Gulfport and grew it into one of the remaining advertising and public relations agencies on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Ted decided to retire in 2018. He sold the agency to Kerry Kavanaugh Studdard, and she moved the agency to Biloxi on Rule Magnolia Street where she continues to provide the excellent services. And that, again, that ribbon cutting is today at four o'clock. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Ted Reedman and Ms. Studdard.
That is in Biloxi.
That is in Biloxi on Rule Magnolia today at four o'clock. And last and by not least, Tyrone Burton's way. We have honorary street, street design and landmark dedication for the celebration of Mr. Tyrone Burton. That's gonna be Monday, May 26th, 2025, nine o'clock, 281 Main Street, Biloxi, Mississippi, 39530. And this is for everyone here. Mr. Tyrone, we're gonna unveil the street marker and the historical landmark. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
Mr. Guine stole my thunder, 'cause Kerry Studdard is my cousin with Primetime and she's doing amazing, very proud of her. Do we have an update on the Broadwater property? What's going on recently?
So CSX started on the west side of Bouvoir. They started cleaning up, they had a dumpster out there. In the last two days, officers haven't seen anybody out there. So they're contacting them to find out what the plan was. The plan was that they were gonna go from Bouvoir, continue all the way east. But we're trying to get an update today on what that, what their plan is and why they haven't been there in two days.
Okay.
But they, they have started cleaning up.
What they're doing on the front side of the Broadwater property, they're cleaning that up? I see.
Yeah, so the, okay, that was CSX I was talking about. The fours are continuing with their cleanup. And if you've noticed, you've seen, you know, all the way around, you can go and see different spots cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
And it is coming along.
Perfect. Do we know how many homeless are out there right now?
Yes, no, it's today, Tuesday. So Friday, Thursday or Friday, they went out there with CSX and they made contact with a couple people. Each of those, each of those appeared to be newer, so they gave them the rules, kicked them off, had them go, but it was only a handful of people that they ran into. And they continue to go out there each day.
Perfect. Thank you so much. The public hearing for the methadone clinic at the planning commission, can we make sure that it comes before us on June the 17th? After the hearing's done?
If the, if a decision is made by the planning commission next Thursday, then yes, it should certainly meet that date by the 17th, yes.
Okay. You think they might not have a decision then?
That's one of their options, we just don't know. They'll, they'll vote up or down, or they may send it to committee, or they may table it, just depending on what's presented and what the arguments are. I would expect that they would probably make a decision that day, and if they do, there's no, no problem making June 17th.
Okay. If they do push it back typically, what are we looking at? When's their next meeting?
The only reason I would think that they would push it back is if there was inadequate information there. I know that we've got all of our questions answered for it.
Okay.
We just don't know what to expect from the attorneys for both sides. But typically, they won't continue it for more than a couple of weeks. That's traditionally what they've done.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. But if we can, make sure it's in front of us by June 17th. Thank you. That is it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGover?
No report.
Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes, where, where are we on the homeless or what's our next step? Or do we have a, do we have a plan? I know that we were, the possibility existed, we may not have another town hall meeting or whatever, but I hadn't heard anything since. So I don't know what's in the works.
As far as a town hall meeting, I can't answer that. But in reference to the email that was maybe an hour ago, two hours ago, about the enclave, I know it was just you.
Right, I saw that.
We're working on, we're kinda going back to the movement. We got an email in reference to potential movement to the enclave area, so we're addressing that, going out to check it out, talk to the people and find out what's going on now. But in the meantime, we're continuing to work with the other organizations, try to find resolutions for, for each individual person and then find out where the different groups are moving from the golf course area.
Let me say this, this been things kicked around with some of the legislators and looking at possibilities. We did visit, you know, the assessment capability and doctor, you know, medical treatment facility at Mercy Cross. And probably the most appropriate thing is to bring a few of the people who are in the business together, again, like we did six, seven months ago, was about to, but to reassess what we have, where we have it, and what the long-term plans on some of these organizations. But I know some, some members of our legislative allocation had some thoughts on, on a place to do specifically the overnight stay. And that's been a problem, people sleeping in different places.
Right.
Our option is, if they have a place to bring them, then, you know, we can get them off the street. But there's a number of options and solutions that have been kicked around. So the next step is to bring everybody together again and let's see what our, you know, put the dots together.
Which is that assessment center we talked about for a while and having that overnight program.
Right, so, but we don't have any meetings or anything planned at this point?
No, not yet. Not yet.
Mayor, we, we put in the council's agenda, council boxes yesterday, an announcement of a meeting next week, an open house and first year anniversary.
Right.
Meeting that the bishop is hosting, and you're all invited to.
At Mercy Cross.
To come through Mercy Cross and see, see what, if you haven't been there, I'd recommend you do it if you can. See, it's, I think it's the 26th.
Right, saw that.
Yeah.
I'll be there. Thank you, chief. Ms. Labata, just to give you a heads up, we had spoken about, you don't need to come We had spoken about sinkholes and French drains on Cove Drive. I kinda put the word out there, I'm waiting to hear if anybody in that neighborhood would like to meet with you, and if they do, I'll line that meeting up. Thank you for your offer to meet with them. Excuse me, cutting grass, do we deal with, if we have people cut the grass, do we deal with contractors on that, or do we deal with express services?
We have, yeah, contract labor that's under Public Works, sorry, a Public Works crew with a crew of two or three. So I think we have 13, about 13 on contract people right now.
All right, and on the docket, that would appear as an express services expenditure.
Yeah, contract labor.
Contract labor, okay. The only last thing I have is if the methadone clinic, that's gonna be before the planning commission on the 5th, and if it's delayed and doesn't come to us until, for some reason or other, that's fine, but if it comes to us on June 17th, I'm out of town, I will miss that council meeting. So I'd like to be here for that, maybe if it works out better for everybody on June 24th, which is the following Tuesday. We don't have the first Tuesday in June because it's election day, but the next three Tuesdays are when we meet.
I'll be out of town that Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would make that request.
It'll be my last one, so, I would like the 17th.
Okay. So anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Shoemaker?
Just a couple things. And I know I've probably beat this to death, the roundabout. There, I said a couple weeks ago, I thought they were finished, however, I was mistaken. My phone was ringing off the hook again this morning because they were out there and had the roundabout shut down again. I know M.DOT's not gonna tell us, obviously, 'cause I've complained about it and they never have, but hopefully now, I think they did the final striping, I hope. I know the city, Stacy said she received several calls this morning as well. I don't know, maybe in the future, if there's anything we can do with M.DOT. I mean, traffic, traffic was an issue, and I'm sure, I don't know if the police department may have got phone calls as well, but it would be fantastic if anybody in the city knew when they're shutting a road down that's so heavily traveled. I would hope that the M.DOT would at least send out an email or somebody to the city somewhere. So anyway, the last thing I have is Public Works. I know I don't say this a lot, but kudos to Public Works, a big thank you to them. They've been out in Ward 7, cutting grass and even weed eating the last couple of weeks. Gotten a lot of good feedback from residents. And they actually went out today, as a matter of fact, and installed a water tap for a business that was having some issues. So, and they did that on the fly, and I appreciate the mayor for that as well. But it was something that needed to be done and they got it done quickly, so I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I got, I got a few things. The first one I want to start out with, and I want to shout out to Parks and Rec for maintaining these statistics from Coastal Mississippi on the tournaments that are being hosted by the revamped, renovated A.J. Holloway Sportsplex. This is the Mother's Day tournament that we just hosted. Nearly 2,000 attendees, nearly a million and a half worth of revenue that was generated, including close to 2,000 room nights over the event. But it just goes to show how impactful these direct revenue events are, not counting indirect revenue that we haven't captured in some of these stats that Coastal Mississippi is tracking for us. So we need to make sure that we keep that revenue generator going. That'll attract more people to the area, more business to the area, and keep the economic growth in that, that area going in the right direction. So good job with the tournaments. I know we're talking about adding additional amenities for these tournaments, directors that are, that are important, including temporary fencing. We need to invest in the scoreboards. One of the things that I'm hearing from some, feedback on the tournaments is this beautiful facility, but we don't have scoreboards that we're used to at some other venues. And we need to be able to find a way to get those scoreboards activated or someone to sponsor those scoreboards, mayor.
We were working, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, sure, sure.
We were working with Coca-Cola, and I think the deal that was proposed to get six, was it, Jerry, six? You don't have to come up, that's good, I'm, I'm good. But we're, we're looking at it and, and looking at some things that, there's some, some opportunity with the usage of that is very popular now. And in, in business, I hate to say this, but if you're not charging enough, you're in the services business, if you're not running a few people away because of price, you're not charging enough. And, and that's a position I think we're in, as, as far as, they got the greatest facility on the Gulf Coast, and we don't want to leave anything on the table. So that's what's in the back of my mind right now. And I see these tournaments and $15 to walk into the door. And, and, you know, we're, we're looking to pay that 5.5 million back over, over 10 years, okay? And the arithmetic is not there. So my analysis is, we're gonna take a harder look at whose benefit, you know, directly from our investment. And so that's on my radar, and I know it's been directly, but it's been, you know, since I've been going to these tournaments with grandkids and, and those sort of things, there's some things that we need to really look at. It's, you know, today, it's a different ballgame with, with these travel teams and, and the ability to, you know, for them to come and use a facility that we're, you know, if it were just our little league teams and so forth, we don't want to leave anything on the table.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I'd also like to mention, and I've heard feedback even from a company that I'm associated with that are interested in sponsorships. I, I don't know if that entails putting it out for bid, or they can simply say, hey, we're interested in this level of sponsorship, whether it's signage or, or advertising or something. But I think there's a great opportunity because it's getting the attention of people that understand when you have a tournament, you have 2,000 or 3,000 people that are looking at your marketing efforts. I think that has some value for us and we can capture some additional revenues. But thank you for that, mayor. I'd like to pivot also to the Neptune.
Can I ask a question, Kenny?
Yes, sir.
This is the PETA. You know, we, we have all these beaten, another thing about this Thomas property, all these pieces of property, and Watson and them, whatever they did to us, but yet they get on TV and make all these speeches. So we just supposed to rebuttal to that, or we just take, get beat up? So why are they allowed to do that?
Well, it's the free press, you know? Anyway, we're, we're gonna express opposition. You know, the thing that really bothered me from the TV world out here, the things that he talked about the other day, the state never owned that property, never owned the bottom land. That's the thing that's not said on, on the media. That was 1872 Spanish land grant, never owned by the state of Mississippi. That was proved, well, at least we're gonna probably, 0 for 6. He's gonna be 0 for 7 in the Supreme Court, too. So that will be upheld. If, you know, if you want to know the story, the state never had a position on that property. And, and that hadn't been told, but we will, we'll tell that story. You know, it, it, they can spend it however they want to spend it, but the fact is, you know, it was sustained at the Supreme Court, it was sustained at the lower court, and it'll be sustained again at the Supreme Court. And his actions are hurting the development of our Biloxi bottom line.
My biggest problem, we don't talk about it, we can't say anything, yet they get on TV making all these speeches. It's had to go on TV again, Watson making all these speeches.
We're on TV now, it'll be.
They're saying, so, you know, we the one dealing with this. We're not supposed to speak about it, but yet they get on TV, make these speeches, I don't think that's right.
Well, this is a public, you know, arena, and bottom line, we've been successful in court. He's not been successful, he's O-for, okay? And there's a reason for that. Because the position is wrong, his position is wrong.
My question, the legal question, the PETA, how did they get away with that? That's my question.
Yeah, well, I mean, he can write an op-ed or an editorial and we could write back and we could try to argue the case in the newspaper, or we could just argue the case in the courts, where, where we're winning in the courts. So he can't, the law is not on his side and the facts are not on his side, so all he has is to try to float some bait out there for us, trying to bait us and make us try to attack him back. We're, we're very content with letting the courts decide. And his latest approach is to attack the courts and, and attack the legislature for not changing the law.
My problem is, we can't say nothing, but they get on TV, make all these speeches. That's what I'm trying to get across to both of y'all, is y'all holding us back.
Trying to raise my, are you trying to raise my blood pressure over here, or what?
Listen, listen for a change.
Okay.
All right? Hard-headed, listen.
Croatian, not hard-headed.
I'm saying, if they get on TV, make all these speeches like we the worst people in the world, but yet we don't rebuttal or say anything about our stance on that. That's what I'm saying, it's supposed to be handled in the court, not supposed to be handled on TV. And that's what they doing, and I don't think that's right. That's why I asked you a legal question, does he have the right to do that?
Yes.
And if he does, then why we don't rebuttal that? Or you can't? That's my question.
Well, we, we can rebut it, and we're gonna rebut it in a way that's more effective, we think, is just letting the other mayors and letting the other local, letting other local folks know that what he's saying is not correct. I mean, I don't really have time to go in and try to, I mean, where he's saying that, that the, that they're not getting titling funds, they are getting titling funds. Everything he says in there is sort of twisted in his favor, but it doesn't really matter. I mean, it's, the people see through that. I mean, I looked at some of the comments to what he said, and there were very few comments, and those that were there were, were pro Biloxi. And that was a state, those are statewide type comments, so, you know, he's got his own agenda, and I, I'm not looking to fight him in the press. Because they want to do that so they can use that and create an issue of us against them and try to deny us titling funds and deny us legislative funds like they did two years ago. So all we can do is just get our message out the best we can, trying to, trying to take the high road. You have a right to speak, though, as much as you want. I'm not holding you back. Y'all aren't being held back if y'all want to make comments to the press.
Yeah, you know, you can't go on TV 'cause they get half the facts on TV, they don't get them right. And most of the time, the people that does all these reports don't really understand anything anyway. And it's hard, when you deal with the TV, it's hard to explain the system, the laws, everything we do with the LDOs and the property and stuff like that. You can't make a short statement on TV, it takes a lot.
What we can do, though.
Like Jerry Creel, it takes him an hour and a half to talk about something.
Well, what we can do is, if there's any question about, about that, the thing we reaffirmed the lease on May 6th, and by the way, he appealed that last Friday, he's done another appeal, he sued the city once again. But if anybody had a question over what was done there, they could watch the entire council meeting and they could see us talking about the leases. They could see us, when you asked Kavanaugh, what were they trying to charge this guy before? 3.9 million. What does the bow pay? 1.5 million. All that's out in the record. So it's out there. If somebody had questions, I just refer them to the meeting. I say, watch the full meeting and judge for yourself.
And bottom line, I may be listening, in, in the court of law, we would rather be us than them. Is that all right?
Always.
Yeah.
Well, see, my, my biggest thing, the tape he made on TV about he's upholding the law, is like, we breaking the law. I mean, he said that on TV.
Yeah.
That's your job.
Wrong, that's wrong.
And that's what got me, that part right there. Like, we the bad people. So anyway, I just wanted to make it, bring it up and let them, put out there that we paying attention to that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. If you have any other items, when I'm finished with my report, we'll come back to you. Thank you. So I do want to also talk about Neptune's crawfish boil, it was a great family, community event, probably the biggest and best, free crawfish, free music, even Councilman Shoemaker was there, and I think that's why the attendance was up this year. But all, all fun aside, military helicopter, a military presence there, crawfish sack races, it was family, it was our community, it was Biloxi through and through, great music, and it was one of the best. And I talked to Sherri afterwards, I know it was a little messy with the crawfish everywhere. We're, we're gonna talk to the crew about doing a better job with that, and, but that communication, it'll, it'll be better next year, especially with the, the after-event cleanup. Let's see, I just got a couple other things. Budgets, budgets are coming up rapidly. I know the administration is working on their end to get all the department meetings and with the directors and, and kind of get all that teed up. But I looked at the schedule, and the, the schedule, I'm gonna request that if we can move, at least when it starts with the council, if we can move that to July 8th. July 8th is normally our off week, but I'd like to move to July 8th. We have at least three new council members that are coming aboard, and I think we need to start when that new council kind of fires up. And I hope that don't put a monkey wrench into anything, I hope we can kind of make that happen. But if y'all can look at that, let us know. If that's, if that's a problem, let us know, we'll, we'll figure it out. But I'd, I'd at least like to request that, mayor.
You know, the first movement is, is on revenues, and that's the most straightforward. So I think our first.
Yes, sir.
Event would be that, and, and I have no problem starting a little bit earlier than that.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll keep.
The reason being, we got new council members, and we're not just one, we got three new, at least three new council members coming on board.
And, you know, I've expressed that, you know, my door is always open even before, you know, July situation to give some orientation as far as just the mechanics and, and the process.
Yes, sir.
I'm happy to do that.
The other thing I'd like to request, and, and I know we have a budget committee that Mr. Tisdale has kind of invited some people to attend and be part of, but one thing I'd like to request on behalf of the council is if we can get a trailing 18-month that has revenues and, and the expenses, if we can get that by July 8th, that would be helpful to see the trailing 18 months, and then we can talk about budgets versus budgets. And the reason I'm requesting it is because the actuals, that 18-month actual, and it can be February back 18 months, that's fine. But at least we can get a snapshot as we're comparing the trends going forward with the existing budget of what the actuals look like. A lot of times, we look at budget versus budget, and those aren't real numbers, because the budget was the budget and it wasn't, wasn't the actual numbers, and then we're seeing the variances, and sometimes, as a body, we're trying to process that, and it's, it doesn't come out as accurate as it needs to be. So I'm, I'm just asking for that in addition to the book that the administration provided last year. I'm just respectfully requesting that, if y'all would consider it. Let's see. I think that about covers it, mayor, on my end. Mr. Lawrence, you got anything else you want to add?
Say again?
You have anything else you want to add?
That's a good.
Okay.
I thought you was finished. I thought you was finished.
No, no, all due respect, no, I get it.
Forgive me for that.
All right.
I thought you was finished, you was, oh, I was gonna ask afterwards.
No problem.
I just wanted to bring that up, that's all.
What's that? Yeah? Ms. Newman?
If y'all don't mind, I would like to be able to make a motion that maybe forces the planning commission to make a decision that night, so we can be, bring it back forward to us on June the 17th, because I would like to be here to be able to participate in this before, because my husband made an anniversary trip the last week, you know, that I'm supposed to be here, so I would like for it to be June 17th. Can we make a motion for that?
You can make a motion that you strongly desire them to make, make that ruling by that date, I don't know if you can command them to.
All right, make a motion that we strongly desire for them to make a decision, so that we can have it before us on June 17th.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
We have a second by Mr. Guines, and it was motion by Ms. Newman, any additional discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have a comment, I'd also like to be present to hear that and to vote on that, and I won't be in town on the 17th, so I'd like the same consideration. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Everybody understand what we're voting on? Just make sure. All right, all in favor? Motion five to two? Did you get the yays and nays? You got the yays and nays? Okay, good. Good deal. All right, anybody else? Have anything else? There being none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Oh, we had me. Why's that?
All right, let's, let's go ahead and move on to policy agenda. And item A. Oh, I'm sorry. You don't want to skip that today?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move to the public agenda, pardon me, citizens' comments, we have a total time for each individual, approximately three minutes, the total amount of time for this segment is 45 minutes, so we'll go ahead and start on my left, your right, anybody on this side of the room would like to come up and make any comments? Anybody on the right side of the room? Anybody in the back? See, I knew, I knew nobody wanted to say anything. All right, we move on to policy agenda. Clerk would read item A.
Orders to amend Chapter 2, Article 14 pertaining to municipal facilities.
All right, and I think this was motion by Mr. Guines, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Guines?
Peter, could you give us a little update on it?
Which one?
Orders A, municipal facility code of ordinances.
This was just to equalize some of the, it actually lowers the fees for the most part, like when people were renting the entire civic center, it was a little unclear whether they also had to rent the courtyard, and whether some of the, like the kitchen, whether that was in addition, so we've, we're trying to clarify, when you rent the entire ballroom at the civic center, that includes the kitchen, the lobby, the courtyard. I think some of the other groups, if they would rent it for several days, but they were only going to use the lights for one day, we had it charging for the lights per day, so we made it per event. Essentially, all these are more in line to satisfy potential customers, rather than enrich the city, might put it that way.
In other words, we just kind of cleaned it up a little bit.
Yeah, overall, we're lowering, I think we're basically lowering the fees, because some of the fees, it's unreasonable to charge somebody to use the lights when they rent it for three days, but they're only using the lights for one day.
Gotcha.
Or they're renting the entire facility, and then saying, we want an extra $100 for the kitchen.
Gotcha.
So, things like that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I saw that what you had mentioned, Peter, were spelled out at the Civic Center and the Gruitch Center, I didn't recall seeing anything unless I missed it on the Snyder Center.
Right, all that's staying the same, this is just for the Gruitch and the Snyder.
Gotcha, all right.
I mean, Gruitch and Civic.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed? Unanimous? Move on to the resolutions.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental located at 245 McDonald Avenue, Unit 166.
I'll move that.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I looked at this, can't support this, and the reason I can't is there's no change in the character of the neighborhood, if you make a condition use on this, you've changed in the character of the neighborhood. There's no reason to do it, we're denied, anytime we try to do anything inside a condominium, we denied it. Denied Cypress Cove, that's a big difference of doing a short-term rental outside by a house. Because what you're doing here is you're taking this and turning it into a hotel, and it's supposed to be a condominium, so you're not building, would not build a hotel, and if you would build and have been the same for 20, 30 years, however long that building's been there, is a condominium, a gated condominium, and that's where it's sustained. And as far as some of this stuff with property values, that's not going to help the property value at all. There's no way you have a hotel room inside a condominium that's going to help the property value. So I just can't support this, I hope my councilmen see the same thing, because in the past, in the condominiums, we have denied any short-term rental inside the condominium, like at the Cypress Cove. So.
That's it.
All right. Who seconded it?
Me.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add to that, thank you.
Anyone else have anything they want to talk about on this resolution? Anybody in the audience in support of this, wants to come up and speak? Mr. Creel, you have any comments on this? Can you just give us an overview?
This is an apartment complex that had been there for a long time, that a few years ago converted over to become condominiums, they're individually owned. The property is owned RM30, which allows short-term rental as a conditional use. Mr. Meadows, the reason that he's asking for this is because he's moved to Washington to work for Congressman Ezell, and he wants to do something with it. It's a gated apartment complex, it's a condo complex, it's well-maintained, and that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Are there any others?
Not in this complex, no.
Any other comments?
Sir.
All right, I just want to just accurately portray that Mr. Lawrence made a motion to grant conditional use approval, of course, he can vote no, but I just want to be clear, he didn't make a motion to deny, he made a motion to grant this.
I'll make a motion to deny.
That's okay, if you can vote again, you can say no, but the motion was to grant, I just want to be accurate, if anybody else on the council getting ready to vote is, is thinking differently. So call for the question on item B. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is denied, to grant it is denied. Six one.
Who was the one? Okay.
Item C.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a tattoo parlor located at 291 Covenant Square Drive.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Guines, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, this is on Coventry Square Drive, there are, I want to say there are three commercial structures there on the west side, one of those structures is multi-office, if I recall, Jerry. Correctly, there are no businesses across the street, in fact, it's vacant property, there's nothing behind the property, there's nothing zoned residential from Beauvoir Road West to Stennis Drive, except for the apartments off Stennis Drive on the west, and a small subdivision, Arbor Drive, Arbor Drive, and I think Pine, Pinewood, or something like that, that's just off of Beauvoir Road. There is an apartment complex at the south end of Coventry Square Drive, I believe that's that, that housing area is, I think, a Biloxi Housing Authority.
Yes, sir, it is.
That's, that's the only, and it's zoned neighborhood business, as I recall, at least it is on the GIS map.
I believe so, yes, sir.
So there's real, that's residential at the south end, this particular office in that strip section of office, I believe it's right in the middle.
Yes, sir.
Of that, so anyway, I went and looked, I've got pictures, if anybody wants to look at them, I'm happy to show you, that there's no residential on the same block, although there is the apartments at the very south end of Coventry Square Drive. Mr. Creel?
This is, this is the existing strip center, right behind the Tate Five old change there across from McAllister's, all they're doing is moving into empty tenant space that's there, you've got a warehouse just south of this that has a lot of in-and-out truck activity, and then you have the apartments at the end, but the, the request is very reasonable, it was approved 13 to 0 by the planning commission, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Anyone else on the council? Any comments? Is the applicant or owner here that wants to make a comment or two? There being none, call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous?
Six one.
What?
One.
Oh, one? Who was against?
One against George.
Oh, George, okay. My bad. All right, move on to the consent agenda, move by Mr. Lawrence?
Second. I got a couple questions, Mike, I guess, on I, India? This is, is MDOT going to wind up taking this over? The bridge?
Bridge light?
I mean, it's going to eventually, MDOT's have to do that, the bridge is going to fall onto them. So are they going to put up any money to help us do all this stuff, the 15 million to replace the metal and all that, or we just going to keep putting out this money ourselves?
This is the part of the.
MDOT will wind up with this piece of property.
To the Pops Ferry Bridge, what is it, just lights? Okay.
We own the bridge.
Yeah, we own the bridge.
So this is to repair the wiring for the, I believe, the streetlights, this is coming under Public Works, so I don't know the exact details, but as for, is MDOT going to take over that bridge, we don't really know at that point, at this point, whether, I don't think the discussions have been made at all about to that level.
Yeah. The first step is finish the Pops Ferry extension, then application to consider state road designation.
I noticed it was listed under the county, and the county gave it to us.
That's right.
Originally, and we've been spending nothing but money on it, but it should be on the MDOT, and MDOT should be paying for these bridges, that's kind of just like, and all these bridges belong to MDOT, they don't belong to the city.
Well, again, you might have checked with Michael Watson on that one.
What?
No, I'm just kidding. That's unfortunate, the problem is, we do own the bridge, that is, that's a fact. So, you know, I've stepped into getting, getting Pops Ferry designated as a state road, which gives us a federal, you know, DOT kind of application for money, it is what it is, but our first move to get it designated is to finish this, you know, the extension of Pops Ferry. Along those lines, we did visit the underpass, overpass situation, and they pretty much have to got it poured, if you, if you have a, go around the drive by the Coliseum, the high-rise parking garage, you'll see, it'll become apparent on how we're going to connect the roadway or connect it to parking lots with the Pops Ferry extension, and doing a good job on them, ahead of schedule on that one. But we don't, we don't, we own the bridge and Pops Ferry Road, it's not a state-designated road, not a, what do they call it?
State aid.
State road, state aid road.
My biggest problem, we.
But that's for the lights, this is, bottom line, it was for the lights, right? Okay, streetlights.
And now, Peter, on Ed November?
Yes, sir.
Mike likes all them words. What are we doing here? Are we changing it, the way we was doing it?
No, we're just extending those facade grants, there's no new facade grants, we're looking at the Machado Patana Building, you've got the Death Sports Building, where there were sales tax money going to them, and Main Street is also managing these facade grants. There's no new ones to manage, but as the years go on, they're getting, still getting little trickles of money, and so we're just extending their ability to, to manage that.
You said Main Street is managing, who's the Main Street? You talking about their board? Their board of managing this stuff, not us?
They're managing it just to the extent of, we're not allowed to give money directly to, to a business for a facade grant, but they're an intermediate, where we gave the money to them, and then they gave it to the, to the business.
So you saying the facade grants are going to go away, this is going to be something different?
No, but just to continue making payment, for the business to continue receiving money on the facade grant over the years, through sales tax or whatever, somebody has to be able to give them the, be the conduit or the go-between.
So it's how you paying them? How they paying it back?
Yes, sir. About 10 more years.
Oh, yeah, here's my favorite one, Papa P., this is the Death Sports again, so is this a good thing or a bad thing? Could we spend so much money on Death Sports already?
There you go.
It's been a waste of money, but anyway.
Go look at, you need to go look at.
What are we doing here?
Finish it up, that's it.
I hope it's good news for a change, that we are two and a half million on this place for nothing.
It's great news, it looks really good, the lean-to is finished, Public Works has got their equipment parked up underneath there, it looks really good, this is just making the final payment.
The final payment?
To tap out, that did the lean-to roof for the equipment off the side of the building.
So we're going to have more bills coming later? I guess, okay.
Well, not from tap.
At least we paying off something. And my, and my other favorite ones are R and Q, the knee case, are they actually doing a good job anywhere?
Tell them, Walt.
Come on, come on, Walt, somebody got to get somebody to do something in this city here, we need to start finishing our projects.
Yes, sir, council, change, item 5R is related to a change order which extends knee case's contract for the St. Michael's project to May 31st, that was in part due to the delays and continued delays with CSX trying to get flaggers available, so they can do a work within the CSX right away. Since CSX cannot get us those flaggers, May 31st is the end date for their contract, and this week I'll be sending out a punch list to the contractor, knee case, it's fairly extensive for St. Michael's of work they need to do, they'll have 30 days to perform the work, their contract time will be suspended, and if not, they'll have the remaining days of their contract to complete the work, so, and in our other area, our project area, BEA 1, 2, and 3, we are having some difficulties with knee case, there's an old sewer main, which has been the existing one, and they've installed a new sewer main, but everybody's on the old sewer main primarily, because they have still failed to get a subcontractor to line the sewer manhole at Pine Grove and Highway 90. Because of that, the sewer still flows to the old sewer main, and it goes down to the Coliseum, and it's having to go through a very small pipe to get into the pump station, which causes problems sometimes, and we've had difficulties with knee case committing to getting that sewer main lined, and we've had issues with the Beauvoir Pump Station, which is why we reduce their pay app every month by $145,000 because of the issues at the pump station. So we have had some difficulties with contractor, knee case brothers construction company getting everybody tied into the new systems, and it's difficult to get an answer out of them, when they're going to get a subcontractor out there, but we can make that happen.
There's some, there's some design issues, too, I think with. I think with, uh, I think that's the, the deepest, uh, lift station we have, isn't it? Move on?
For, for that area, yes, sir. For that area, yes, sir.
There was some, uh, electrical stuff and some corrosion stuff that needs to be addressed. But we're working through it, and we're holding money, so, uh, you know, they're not gonna get paid for what they've already installed until this is resolved. Alright, good job, Walt, thank you.
And Walt, did you say that was at Pine Grove?
Yes, sir, that's where the forced main from the Edgewater Mall lift station or pump station is forced to that manhole, it's forced main, uh, to that sewer manhole. And because it's a forced main and it's, you know, has a lot of activity, you need to line those manholes to protect them from corroding. And, uh, we have been asking them for quite an amount of time to get that done because once they do that, then they can tie into it everybody off the old sewer main, which, again, caused some difficulties down by the Beauvoir Pump Station.
Right, and this, this is all related to Item Q?
Uh, Q, I believe, is, um...
Pops Ferry, no, I'm sorry, that's, I'll, I'll get with you later on that. Go, go ahead, thank you, Mr. Glavine. I'll get back with you, Walt.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, continue?
Yeah, uh, on W whiskey, Mike? This is somebody that just had a contract with others, just pulled up, is not gonna do it. They're not using the building. The Gruich Center? We were sent a, a resolution.
Program Believe, I think.
Program Believe for the last three years used the building for their summer camp, but this year, they've decided to stay in their own building. They have a new building.
So, this is just like such we have to do legally?
Yes.
Right?
They were wanting, they were wanting...
They're not gonna use it, so we eliminate the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the last one is CC on the, we moving twenty-five thousand dollars for HVAC repairs. What is that, HVAC?
Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Okay.
Air conditioning.
He told me what it was. If you get away with twenty-five thousand, that's pretty cheap.
That's pretty, oh, yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Tisdale? Do you have anything?
I like that.
I'll get to it later.
Heating, ventilation.
Go ahead to...
Alright. We'll go ahead and go down the line. Mr. Guarns, do you have anything on the consent?
That's it for me.
Mr. Guarns, do you have anything?
Oh, none, I think George covered everything.
Okay, Ms. Newman?
Oh, you missed one?
Okay. Mr. McGilvery?
I just wanna make one comment on I about the Pops Ferry Bridge. When it, the, the project first started, I think we had eleven lights that were out. And in coordination with Public Works and the, the power companies and everything, we got down to this one. And I think once this is completed, all them lights will be up and running. And, uh, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the citizens really appreciate it as well. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Tisdale?
Item D, it deals with purchasing some mowers. Are these additional mowers? New mowers being added to what we have on inventory? Or are they repla, or are they replacing worn-out mowers?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but they, there were capital items that were budgeted.
Okay, alright. On item... On Item G, are there any restrictions on how the fire, fire insurance rebate? Are there any restrictions on how that money can be spent? Are there strings attached, more or less?
Yes, sir. So, um, there's a lot of strings attached. Basically, it has to go towards firefighting, um, anything for fire suppression. Uh, can't use it on EMS, uh, to an extent. They have made some revisions there.
So, there are strings attached, and you've got some guidelines and everything. I have questions, I'll get with you later. Thank you, sir. On Item Q? This deals with, um, Pops Ferry extension construction, and it mentions, um, it's a change order. Mentioned some unstable material they encountered? Are you the unstable material lady? Are you the unstable lady?
I'm definitely unstable.
It's about the muck.
Yes.
I was just wondering what the nature of the material was.
Yes, it's just they came across a, a section of, of, uh, basically dirt. It's muck, it's real wet and soupy. So, it's more, it takes more work to get it out and to backfill than just normal excavating.
Right, gotcha.
And let me explain too, a little bit. I learned a little bit the other day in talking with, you know, the folks that are doing it.
Are you gonna, you gonna show off right now?
Yeah, I am, as a matter of fact.
Okay, go ahead.
But they actually take a sample and they submit it somewhere, and they burn it and to see how much organic material is left. If there's X amount left in it, then it becomes muck, and then you have to do...
That's right.
...other, uh, landfill things. But it was an interesting little science project that I learned the other day, site inspection.
That's right.
So, we're not really, we're not so much talking about toxic material deposits as much as it is, just it's soil that needs to be...
Highly organic material.
Yes, wet, yeah, yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker? Alright. Alright, uh, we'll do, uh, call for the question for approval on the consent, and then I'll ask for exceptions. All approve? Those opposed? Motion carries, uh, we'll ask for exceptions. Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Mr. Guarns?
None.
Ms. Newman? I have none. Mr. McGilvery?
None.
Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Shoemaker? Alright. Move on to code enforcement? Hearing is now open.
Item A, Division Fawley LLC, 511 Division Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Division Fawley LLC, 509 Division Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, A+ Able Administration Incorporated, 266 Crawford Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Elizabeth and Flowers White, 571 Esters Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item E, Gregory Pittman, 202 Main Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Gregory Pittman, 600 Main Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, Barbara Joan Lutz, Zero Malvila Cove, that case has been resolved. Item H, LC Holdings LLC, 442 Howard Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Man. You're on a roll, Director.
Yeah, you're seven in a row there. That might be a record.
Alright, just grass cutting, is that what it is?
Overgrown lot.
Yes, sir.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of, uh, this property, Barbara, uh, Joan Lutz?
LC Holdings.
LC Hold, I'm sorry, LC Holdings, 442 Howard Avenue? There being none, this case is closed.
Item I, Docus Mamiska, 631 Peyton Drive, we're asking for thirty days on this. It is still in violation.
Chair entertaining motion for thirty days?
I'll move it.
Moved. Moved by Mr. Guarns, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous?
Okay. Well, uh, Item J, Hung Van Lee, 460 Howard Avenue, this property's still in violation. Overgrown lot.
Alright. Anyone here to speak on behalf of Hung Van Lee, 460 Howard Avenue? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item K, Geraldine A. Fayard, 436 Lemieux Street, that case has been resolved. Item L, Genevaian J. Doxchuk Estate, 259 Rodenberg Avenue, this property's still in violation. Uh, owner had requested an extension. He basically reorganized the stuff on the property. It looks a little bit neater, but it's still clearly in violation.
How many days you wanna give him?
Uh, I would suggest we not give him any days. Uh, I mean, you can, you can see that the stuff has been pushed to the side of the house, but he had assured us that he would clean everything up if we gave him an extension, and he just didn't do it.
So, you wanna just proceed to where it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Director, have y'all told the owner that? That, hey, you moved things around, this isn't acceptable? Have y'all made any attempt to tell him?
Well, in, in his opinion, he thinks it's resolved, and it's not resolved. I haven't had a conversation with him, but, uh, if you approve this, I will have a conversation with him.
Fair enough. Yes, sir.
And, and given the timeline, and even when you have that conversation, does the property owner still have time to clean that up or get it shipshape before it proceeds further?
Well, see, we would have to go out and get quotes from our cleanup contractors, so that takes time. He still has time to get it cleaned up before we actually move in, so...
Okay, thank you.
We'll give him some extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. So, to be clear, Director, I think, uh, please give notice before you proceed to, to those bids so he can have a reasonable time in that process to, uh, clear it up before action is taken.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, this case is closed.
Just, uh, one last thing I'd like to tell you. We, you know, we had two vacancies in code enforcement for a while, and we have filled those two vacancies. So, we're now back to full staff in the code enforcement department again, and you should see a lot of progress being made on these properties.
How many code enforcement officers do you have?
There are four code enforcement officers. They're each assigned to different area of the city, and their responsibility is to patrol those areas and to take calls as they come in for their area. So, assigning that area to them, it's kind of a pride of ownership type thing, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Director. Move on to the routine agenda. Chair will entertain a motion by Mr. Lawrence?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
You hope your board checks.
Alright, council, let's see. As of this morning, there's, uh, a little over two-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars. It's in Step 4 or 5. It's been there for one day in the Step 4 or 5. And as usual, uh, once it gets to that step of four, uh, it usually takes ten to twelve, uh, calendar days to reach, uh, the city. And that should be followed up by a fairly, uh, next round of funds because of the pay apps that are on today's docket.